Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, October 18th. It's good to see everyone here this morning. We hadn't started with prayer and pledge. If you would, please stand this morning. Our Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to us. We thank you for this opportunity to look into all these different subject matters today. God, we thank you, Lord, for discretion and wisdom that only you can impart, and we look to you for that today. Bless us all here today as we deliberate on every decision we make. We thank you for not only this good day, but every future day you might give us here in Franklin County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first matter of business this morning is approval of minutes. We have several sets of minutes we're approving this morning. A motion to approve.
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Lockley. The motion was by Commissioner Parrish to approve minutes for my regular meeting from September 27th of this year and September 20th, and special meeting also on the 7th, and then a regular meeting on the 4th of October. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Up next will be payment of the county's bills.
So moved.
Or a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Next, we have some awards and recognitions this morning. Franklin Needs and Weems Memorial. Would you guys please come forward this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's a great opportunity to be here before you this morning. I have a group, a local group here, which is Franklin Needs, and they would like to make a presentation to Weems Memorial Hospital. Many of you know that a few years ago, we used to have mammography system here in the county, and through a partnership with USDA and Franklin Needs Group, a great partnership, that we're bringing mammal back to our county to save lives and to prevent breast cancer. And so this month, there's breast cancer awareness month, and I'd like to just turn it over to one of them so they can tell you about the check they're representing to us.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
We are very excited to have been able to raise the funds over the last 10 years through our charity event, the Pink Out, that we are in a position now to help Weems get this mammogram machine. They were able to get a grant for 55-45, and when we heard about that, it was a no-brainer that we wanted to provide the 45% of the funds. So we are giving Weems $137,250 to match.
So good.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you all.
We appreciate that.
Yep, that's right.
Y'all done a good job of raising the money.
And you know what else it does? It just shows the quality and the value of our hospital on behalf of the most important and most valuable asset in our community, and that is the health of our people. That's what's so special about this, and thank you, guys, very much.
Mr. Chairman, what I will say that it also shows is that a lot of times you guys hear about the negative about Weems. Here's a positive.
Amen. Very good.
Now, also, I mean, while I'm up here, I don't know if we want to do it now or later, but I have to have board approval to spend the money. You know, anything over $50,000 we have to have board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion, Commissioners, before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to concur Commissioner Bolt sentiments. It was a great job. That teamwork makes the dream work, and now our local ladies can go get a mammogram and hopefully prevent breast cancer in the future. So, thank you all.
And this updates our hospital. Think of all the new services. Now think of access. That's very, very important.
And one thing we do also, you know, we are investing in three areas: our staff, our patients, and our facilities and equipment, and to create assets to care, you know, for a much-needed service in our county, because some people cannot go and drive for a mammogram. They have to walk or whatever. And so this would be good for the uninsured, you know, people that don't have insurance. So my heart is touched, because we've all been in touch with people that have been impacted by breast cancer. So thank you this morning. And I have a couple of information items, if you want me to tell you about them now.
We have a vote to get. Can you just say it?
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Yes, I'd like to also thank this private organization for helping Weems obtain this mammogram service for the people of Franklin County. It's very needed and will be greatly appreciated by all.
So you're out of the way yourselves. You see, you've asked, "What can I do for the hospital?" rather than, "What can the hospital do for me?" You've made the quality of life of our people so much richer.
Seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Again, thank you to Franklin Needs, the organization, 10 years strong. This is one of the benefits, not the only benefit. This is a big benefit to the residents of Franklin County, and thank you so much for everything you are.
Mr. Chairman, Courtney, I would pay good money to see you try to go put that depository at the bank.
Wouldn't that be neat? I'd love that.
It might not work.
Wouldn't that be great?
Thank you so much, really. We appreciate it. Mr. Walker, you are on our report. Do you want to go ahead and handle that now, or is there anything that's action?
No, there's no action, just information right now. Just wanted to just briefly.
All right, please proceed.
Yeah, just let you know.
Why are you here?
Yeah, just let you know what we're focusing on. A couple of items, you know, we'll be focusing on the Care Bill Retail Pharmacy, you know, coming up pretty soon, as well as looking at our plans for the new hospital addition or renovation. So that's something we'll come back before you. And we also have some other USDA small grants, but we probably will be applying for another one for the CT trailer. We want to get a brand-new trailer inside the hospital. So that's something, but it's a 55-45% match, and USDA has some additional funding. So we may go ahead and apply for that before the funding run out. Just wanted to update you on that. But thank you all for your support, and thank once again for this great group that we have here. You know, my heart is touched again.
One question for you runaway. Tell me where we are with the timeline for the new hospital, the new wing, the new billing.
Yeah, the new wing. You know, one of the things we have to look at now, the plans that we have, is see how much it would cost, but the original plans that we have. And then after that, you know, see if we need to add or tweak those particular plans. So we should be able to come back within the next couple of months with something concrete of which way we're going on that.
Go forward from there. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all for your support. Great, appreciate it.
That's the best news I've heard in a while.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, talking to the corner of the back. Before we move on to public comments, I want to see if anybody, you or Commissioner Ward, and I'm sorry, I'm here trying to figure this out, would like to say anything about what I'm about to put up on the screen there. And while the pictures you sent me, Chairman, I picked that one because if you see that sign, it says what? If you guys can see that.
Rome said a glasses.
I can't.
It says on your tablets, it says, "We love."
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
In the foreground. I was looking in the back.
Yeah, me too.
But yes, let me see if this helps. Tapping in the wrong spot. But yes, I don't know if you guys want to address that, where we are with that, what's going on exactly, because there was a lot of posts on Facebook last night about it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll let you take the lead on that one.
Well, it's been a long time coming to get, to vote for both of these channels to be dredged, but specifically this one. I think the last time they did it, I was still in high school, and you know, so it's been a long time coming. It's something that we have, as a board, dizzling fault toward for the six years I've been here, anyway. We're excited, you know, could things be different? Yes, they could. But they are what they are, and we're going to do what we can to help all of Franklin County prosper and be the best it can be. Wish the bay was open, but it's not. But at least we'll have some deep water access, so when it does open back up, it'll be better than it was before. And I do want to thank specifically, there's been others that have been involved in this. Mr. Alan Pierce, whether people know it or not, was naggingly behind the Corps the whole time. He was the go-between between me and them for a long time, not to try to hinder things, but to try to help. That way, you know, we're not saying things we don't need to say, because you can demandingly ask, but you can't demand of a federal entity to do anything. So we're just happy that they're there. We're happy to see the project completed, working diligently to make sure both channels get dredged completely, what they need to be. So those are things we're working on. And I thank the board for their support all the way and every step of the way in this endeavor.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I would reinforce what you've just said. Franklin County means patience. We see projects that go on in Franklin County that never get so-called suddenly done until, for years. And a lot of that is so that we can carefully be responsible for getting money that's other than our ad valorem taxes to help us take care of projects like this. So it does take time, but the payoff is huge, and this is a good example of that on behalf of the people of Franklin County.
And Mr. Chairman, you know, I did receive comments about how small the pipes were, and this and that, and the depth again, and the length. Just so the public is aware, we've said many meetings here that that's something that we can take up with the contractor when he's established and on-site to talk with him about that. We also had discussions about turning it into a navigable channel to have it regularly maintained, so we're not 20 years, 30 years later, and we're in the position that we are now. So just so that the public is aware, we did have that discussion as well.
Yeah, and to add to that, I forgot about that. Thank you, Commissioner. Some of the research I've done in the last couple of weeks, I actually found a document that a university in Illinois had on file that was the original document the Corps did for the dredging of the channel back in the late '70s. And in that document, it states they're supposed to be doing it every 60 months. That's their maintenance schedule. So that's a conversation we need to have with our federal delegation, because it needs to be put, both channels need to be added to their regular budgetary ask every year at the Corps, so we can keep these maintained.
And Mr. Chairman, also Congressman Neil Dunn, we did speak with him about that as well. So hopefully, by speaking with him and meeting with him, and East Point Civic Association also was there, we all put in our two cents. So hopefully, we've got the right person on track to be able to get some things moving with the Army Corps with this dredging issue.
There were some videos on social media of them actually working, you know, underwater, but I couldn't really capture somebody else's Facebook, because I didn't want to try to do that stuff, you know. But they were in the water, so I don't want to think that this is as far as they got yesterday.
And you know what this is? This is talking about this project and what it needs to be recognized, long-term maintenance in the future. This is known as, if you will, aftercare in some ways. If you think of our landfill right now, we've just learned over the last several months that we have to set aside money for maintaining the closure of a closed landfill down the road. Well, this is another good example. We know that this sentiment will reoccur again in these channels, five years hence. And so proactively planning with the Corps and working with them as a team, in five years, we can look for maintenance re-dredging if we start planning for it now.
Thank you, Mr. Maron.
Yes, sir.
All right, so next is public comments. I think both of these public comments are by Zoom. I don't see them in the room.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Debbie Jordan is the first one I picked up.
I think this is her number. If Ms. Jordan, if you're 1-5-4-9, please unmute, which you have. State your name for the record. You can address the board. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioner. Debbie Jordan, and I just want to touch on a couple of things. I was trying to get any progress reports on, is to whether there's been any progress or if there's any planned dates for the Land Oak Village Fire Coordinator's organizational meeting, considering the fact that the Florida State Firefighters Association is preoccupied, understandably, as they're dealing with the aftermath of Hurricane Ian. I'd like to know if we can have some kind of long-term idea of what, is there any kind of plan there. The next thing I wanted to bring up real quick is, again, I would like to please ask you to really become familiar with and review the special zoning regulations for Land Oak Village, the barracks apartments. They are extremely prohibitive. I actually will follow up with emails to each one of you, talking about the setback requirements and how it's almost paralyzing that people can't do anything in their property, on their own private property. And I think that I would really ask you to please study those ordinance of 9717, which is the nuisance ordinance, is punishable by misdemeanor. Just please take a look at those things. I will follow up with emails, and I'm going to keep it short. Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing. I did forget to bring up, I had a quick question. Is, this is on another topic, is there an ethics procedure in place, county businesses to, county employees direct or indirect steering of county businesses? Hold on, I, do you allow county employees to direct or indirectly steer businesses, steer business to private organizations? That is the end of my public comment today. Thank you, and thank you to Franklin Needs. Appreciate that.
Mr. John Barry?
Hold one second for me, sir. Mr. Barry, if you would, unmute, and you can begin talking. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Good morning, Commissioners. Ms. Jordan touched on what I was going to address. I'm interested also in the county commission's policies for Franklin County employees, both contract and non-contract regular employees, as to the ethics side of the equation that addresses steering business and doing business with the county through a third-party entity, whether it be a 501(c)(4), whether it be a private organization, or whether it be a whether it be a 501(c)(4), whether it be a private organization, or whether it be a business by which one owns. Is that allowable? Or are there procedures in place to prohibit that? And the reason I ask that, because that appears to be a conflict of interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. All right, that was it, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Those are the two I had.
That's all I have anymore.
Okay. Mr. Renee Brennan, 911 Grant Sheriff's Office.
Good morning. I just have a couple of things, and it's just signatures. We have a MOU update on our regional, two regional grants, and I need to give that to Mr. Schuler. Aaron has given that to him, and need an approval for a signature on that updated MOU for those two regional grants. Also have, we were awarded a grant for $79,000. It's to update a part of that update on the regional side for our 911 system, and that grant agreement needs a signature. And that's the only two things I have.
Okay, Mr. Schuler, do we need to make two separate motions for these, or censor both grants? Can it be one motion?
Same subject matter, 911.
Yeah.
I think one motion would be sufficient, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure, the Board.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Renee.
Oh, sorry. I thought we'd already handed those.
We did.
Oh, she took them back. Okay.
All right. Up next, Superintendent of Roads and Bridges, Mr. Howard Neighbors. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Doing well. How you doing?
I've got nothing for the Board this morning.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Neighbors?
Mr. Neighbors, I think you are out engaged in the conversation before the meeting. I'll call you after the meeting, so we can finish up what we need to talk about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do it. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, thank you for everything you do.
Thank y'all, Commissioner.
And what you guys do for us.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director. Seem like I'd have this memorized by now.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
No action items?
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions, Mr. Davis?
Yeah. Fonda, don't you have a open house this coming weekend for hosting hazardous waste materials that people can bring?
Yes, sir. Right along with amnesty.
I saw that. Add in the paper, looked good.
Yes.
So it's going to be concurrent with the amnesty event?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's this Saturday, starting what time?
8:30 to 4:30.
I haven't looked at the paper, I'm sorry.
The hazardous waste run to noon.
Okay.
But amnesty run all day.
Okay. Now, just a quick question, because I don't know. Are some white goods considered hazardous waste, like TVs and such?
Notion.
Okay.
Yeah. With that being said, I guess I could update you, within three months, we have accumulated 2,000 tons have been brought in. Basically, they shortened it up, one working face, a sale, just about completed. So the debris is steadily coming in.
Yeah. And, Mr. Davis, did we just switch our hours at the landfill?
Yes, sir. We did. We have some scheduled for vacation. We are into the winter hours now. You're correct.
Well, I'm talking about like the winter hours. Don't we have a different time schedule we run on?
Say that again?
Don't we do winter hours?
That's right. October 1, we went to winter hours. Being that the contract is normally like to run a little earlier, we just usually keep the hours running from 7:00 to 4:30, 7:00 to 5:00. But because of some going on vacation, shorthanded, we, for two weeks, we're going to go to the winter hours, which is opening at 8:30.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So it's just a temporary thing, is what you're saying? Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Any more questions for Director Davis?
A couple of information pieces. That's not on my report, Commissioner.
I'm glad.
A couple of things. One, a while back, I had asked the Board to authorize Attorney Schuler to draw up an agreement with TDC managing the rentals of the offering. For now, I'm going to put that on hold, for a number of reasons that I will discuss with you on 1-1. What we're going to do, I talked to Fonda about this, what we're going to do is Melissa West, is now his full-time admin assistant, we are going to shift the responsibilities to her for now, until we can, until next year, where we can all meet, meet with TDC once, you know, they get past some of their new contracts or whatever, and then we'll look at it again sometime, hopefully next year. The reason I say that to the Board is only because I will, we have Evergreen scheduled, I hope, temporarily right now, without final confirmation, to be there on the 31st, to talk, to re, I guess, evaluate some of those job descriptions with some of those employees that were complaining. So they're going to be here the 31st. So I will, as Fonda and I will approach them, explain to them what we expect from Ms. West in this role that she'll have, and see what kind of compensation they could work out. Similar to Virginia at the Road Department, where she does admin work for mosquito control, we're going to approach it in that same manner. In addition to that, and I've had, this isn't new to you guys, because I've been complaining about this for some time now, I also, and Fonda doesn't know this, but I am also going to approach Evergreen and ask them to give Fonda's himself, his job description a second look, not because I'm saying he didn't do a good job, sir, please don't take it this way. But I always felt back when Fonda, when Parks and Rec came back to Fonda because of the incident that happened, when he went back, I don't, I don't feel he was compensated correctly for taking back another entire department. Keep in mind, Fonda runs, one, two, three or four departments. I think of all the county employees, excluding constitutionals, he has the biggest county department. And I'm not saying his compensation isn't right, I just want Evergreen to take a second look, and I have a conversation with them as to why I'm asking them to do that. Again, this is all information items. I don't need any action from the Board. I just want you to know, I'd like the Board to know what I'm doing and to say it publicly, so it's not a surprise to anyone. Okay? As we, the results of that, as we get past the 31st, I'll report back to the Board. And I'm sorry for doing this to you publicly, this, Fonda, it's just, you know, it's something that's been burning, you know, any, the Commissioners know, I've talked to them before about this, that's just a feeling that I had, something that's never sat right with me for a long time, so.
But it's something you have to bring back to us anyway, correct?
Yes, yes. Because the entire plan has, Evergreen, any changes they make to it, we'll bring it back to the Board for your information, so you can see, see if you have any questions about it.
Because Debbie, with you, four, four departments.
It's three.
In your department, you've got four.
We have three, Parks, Rec, Animal Control, and Solid Waste.
Okay.
I guess if you want to say recycling, but I think it.
You got Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir.
Animal Control.
Right.
Solid Waste.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, yes. Parks and Rec, Solid Waste, Animal Control.
Okay, okay.
And know that, again, I preach this, this standing right here before, know that Ever, I, Fonda and I, will also go to Evergreen about the Parks and Rec employees. It's another department, I think, we have to do something, Commissioner. That's a.
Well, it's one of the only departments that requires them to work weekends.
Yes, sir. You are correct.
Point blank period. Nobody else does that.
That's right. So when we were close to the storm on, it was a Thursday and Friday, Commissioners, they had to work. I mean, the landfill had to work too, but Parks and Rec had to work. I mean, they worked Saturdays and Sundays. They had to work on those days. So I'm going to have a conversation about Evergreen with that, too, and bring that back to the Board.
Okay. Anything else for Director Davis, while he's here? Commissioners? Sir, thank you for what you do, and thank you for all that y'all do for us.
Yeah, thank you all.
Ms. Pam Brunel, Emergency Management Director. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, Pam.
Just skipping up here. We do not have any action items, Commissioners, but we do know that you implemented that burn ban, and we've taken a look at that, and Ginny handed y'all out a handout of what we will be putting out if y'all agree to lift the burn ban. Now, what you're seeing on TV is for everything west of us, Franklin County got a rain that we talked to National Weather Service, and they agreed that we could lift the burn ban.
So it's in coordination with National Weather Service and with your office?
Yes, sir. Now, in this, we forgot about Landarc, so we'll add to this, you know, with the exception of Landarc, because Landarc, y'all agreed that that fire ban stays there because they do not have a.
Oh, that's completely different, yeah.
Yeah. We'll make sure that we put that information in there, that this applies to all of the county with the exception of Landarc.
The burn ban will still stay in place with Landarc.
With Landarc, yes, sir.
Okay. So do we need a motion and vote, I guess, to cancel the burn ban?
Yes, sir. I think for the record, we should do that.
Okay. Pleasure, the Board?
I'll make a motion to rescind the burn ban.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? We're rescinding the burn ban that we put in place a couple of weeks ago.
The other thing we have.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed.
Is that, we had these printed up to separating your debris, and we handed those out during the storm. If you came in, got a re-entry tag, but we'd like to give each Commissioner one, and then if we do have a storm, then we'll try to get them out into the neighborhoods.
Okay.
So Ginny, you want to walk them up? Yeah, keep all those. That's, that's all for us.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Brunel? Ms. Pam, thank y'all for everything you do.
You're welcome.
Up next, Mr. Eric Lovestran, Extension Office Director.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. Eric sent me an email yesterday. He's attending, goodness, conference, at least having to do with Franklin County at the university. I apologize for not seeing that earlier.
Okay. Michael, if you could, I'd like to get you, I want to go on the record as saying, I want to get you to ask him a question.
Okay.
He had talked about that the schools were working through a DCF contract to get the nutrition stuff back at the school. I'd like to give an update on that, if they've worked through that process yet.
It's a DCF contract?
Yes. I guess it's like a memorandum of understanding between DCF and IFAS, between the university.
Okay.
Yeah, something to do with nutrition at the school. I just want to know if they've completed that. He was, one of the things that was reported that caught my attention.
I'll email and ask him.
Okay, thank you. Mosquito Control Director, Mr. DeWitt Polis.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Scott. How you doing?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Good. I'm instead of my boss today. He's on vacation.
Okay.
We're still doing about the same. The mosquito counts are down.
Yep.
We're starting to transition into ditch work, and with the cooler weather, we're kind of slowing down, so, and we'll just take it from there. But we'll still be spraying a little bit longer, but right now, we're transitioning into going into cleaning ditches with inmates.
Okay. Anyone, Commissioners, y'all have any questions for Mr. Scott on behalf of Mr. Polis? Mr. Scott, thank y'all for everything you do, and make sure, and tell, after he comes back from vacation, tell Mr. Polis we said the same. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Y'all have a great day.
You too. TDC Administrator, Mr. John Solomon.
I don't have any action items for you this morning. One of the information items I did want to bring up was the Frank County entrance signs will now be, are currently being installed at all entrances to Franklin County. They started on the east end, because it was the furthest to go for them, so they started further out first, so those should be up in the next week or two, complete. Hopefully, we'll have some photographs soon.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Solomon, while he's here? Commissioners? Mr. Solomon, thank you for everything you do, and for everything TDC does for us.
Thank you, sir.
And John, you'll be back to help with the openings for the RFQs.
That's what you want? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You're telling me now, so, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, y'all. Interim Airport Manager, Mr. Ted Mosteller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ted Mosteller. I don't have any action items this morning, however, Michael does for the airport.
I do. Thank you.
You want to handle those now, or you want to?
Yeah, because we have time, actually, Ted. I didn't think that we would, but, Commissioners, on page, let's see, let's see, let's see, page 23, item four, no, item three, well, I'm sorry, page 22, that's the very bottom, starts in the heading for the obstruction removal grant, but all the, all the language actually starts at the top of 23. At the September 20th regular meeting, John Collins of AFCON stated that Collins Land Service, they're out of Tallahassee, was the lowest bid, bidder, $138,500 base bid for the obstruction removal project that would clear the obstruction of vegetation around runway 1-8 approach. Once completed and inspected, and Ted, inspection would have to be done by FAA or FDOT or both?
FDOT.
FDOT, thank you.
All inspections are done by the FDOT.
Thank you. Runway 1-8 should be reopened. The county has received the contract with all necessary documentation from Collins Land Service for the Chairman's signature. The project will commence once the Board approves the contract. Any actions, approve the contract, and authorize the Chairman to sign it.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous.
And item four, in addition to runway 1-8 approach obstruction vegetation removal project, the Board tasked Mr. Collins with securing funding for an obstruction vegetation removal project for an additional 250 acres at the airport. The total estimated cost of this project is $935,000. The intent of the project is to remove all trees that are either a current obstruction or will become an obstruction over the next 10 years. The county has received the FAA grant pre-application. That includes the grant pre-application checklist, grant pre-application cover letter, detailed project information sheet, a project sketch, and Ted, I don't know what an ADO-C-A-T-E-X is, but it's in there. If the Board is ready to proceed with the application, approval, and the Chairman's signature is needed, I'm seeking Board action for both.
The ADO is the FAA.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
So once again, Commissioners, more money coming into the airport. You're going to start the obstruction around 1-8, the obstruction removal around 1-8. Right behind that will be the total obstruction removal for the rest of the airport.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, just how are the hangar inspections coming along?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's on me, Commissioner. I haven't had time. Ted was ready.
I understand. I'm ready. I've been ready.
Ted's ready. I got to kind of, Aaron and I got to work out our schedules to get that done. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll get it done.
Okay.
I have worked up a.
Yeah, Ted, a checklist, and I got some information from John as to what the FAA says can be in there and what can't be in there. So, we're going to combine the two checklists, and away we go. Schedules allowing.
We've also been waiting for Andrew Centrix to be here for the inventory.
Yeah, Andrew wasn't much as me and Aaron. I'll be, I'll admit that. That's, yeah, we've been, yeah, trying to get that done. Andrew's pretty flexible also.
And we also met with the FAA.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we also met with the FAA in regards to the renewal of the FBO lease, so we've actually got a draft, and the draft that we're going off of is one from a small airport up in New York State that had a lot of the same structure, so we're kind of borrowing from that agreement because it has already been approved and vetted by the FAA, and we're going to kind of, you know, go off of that one, and we'll get it to Attorney Schuler once John Collins has the chance to review it and approve.
Interestingly enough, Commissioners, I know you've heard in the past that if the FBO collects rent, that we won't get any FAA or FDOT money. FAA previously said, no, that's not the case. We, that's not what we're saying. So, we're not against it, we just want you to justify it when you do it, make sure the numbers are correct. So, we just have to prove it to them that, you know, we're charging the FBO fair market value for that spot, you know, we offset it with the rent, so that is not a problem. We just have to make sure we do it correctly, and working off of this template from up in New York, which is FAA approved, like Aaron said, it should make things a lot easier.
That's good.
Yeah. And the better the FBO does, you know, the better the airport does as well. So, you know, that's kind of the incentivized revenue component.
Does the FBO also enjoy proceeds from the fuel dispensing that goes on at the airport?
They do, and the county airport fund actually receives a percentage of fuel sales. I believe it's 25 cents per gallon. That's just from memory, but it's some percentage basis on each gallon sold.
Correct.
So, Mr. Maron, is that something that, far as the inspections, will that, do you think it'll be taking place before the next meeting, or?
The hangar inspections?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then the other stuff, I'm assuming we'll need to turn the shoulder and look at it first, then it'll be coming through at some point after that. Okay.
Correct, sir.
Okay. I'll just make sure I heard what I heard. It's all good.
Concerning the inspections, I have already started on my own outside, not inside.
Okay.
So, continuing on, I've been very busy, of course, like I mentioned in the FYI, including a meeting this afternoon concerning issues at the airport. One item of note would be CFAS coming up next week, so anyone who'd like to attend that, it'd be in Tallahassee this time. And that's about it.
Mr. Ted, what is that you're talking about?
Yeah, that's going to have.
The CFAS. It's FDOT. It's our purse strings, so to speak.
For clarification purposes, start again and explain to us what you're talking about. Because that, first, I've heard about it, so.
Oh, okay. This happens every quarter, thereabout.
Every quarter?
Yes.
Okay.
Once a quarter.
Are they going to talk about money that we could get for this airport?
It could be. We talk about all kinds of stuff. It's managers, interested people from all airports in District 3, which is, of course, our FDOT district. Of course, and then there will be a state CFAS that's once a, once a year. It'll be normally around the Orlando area, but this one is strictly District 3.
Now, is this, this event, is it solely airport related, or is it FDOT period?
No, it's airport. Aviation FDOT. Need to clarify that.
Okay, that's fine. It's good to know.
So, they're going to, they're going to talk about money specific by airport in this region?
It's everything to do with the airports. Projects, money, traffic, you name it. It's all the managers get together and interested people from the airports, representing the airports. Y'all are invited. Matter of fact, there will be Commissioners there, and different people from all counties represented in District 3. I try to attend every quarter, every time we have one, so.
Thank you for the information, because that, like I said, I didn't know nothing about it, so.
Well, I can give you more information anytime, so just give me a holler.
Is there an agenda, something you can email me, Ted, that I could distribute?
Uh, yes. I don't know if it's been published yet or not. It'd be on the internet. Look on the website of CFASP. C-F-A-S-P-P.
Okay. I'll look at it. If I have questions, I'll call you. Because I'd like, since you brought it up now, I want to make sure they have an agenda, they understand what's being discussed there.
The last two or three have been in Panama City Airport, but this one will be in Tallahassee.
Okay.
And I have, for your information, invited them to be here, but they like to stick around the larger metropolis.
I get it. Trust me.
Possibly, we will have them here somewhere down the line, if that's proven, if everyone's in, I mean, we'll do that.
Got to have a full lane.
You got to have a full lane, right?
Well, give them a good seafood dinner.
That would be great.
I was going to say, a good little country boil will bring a whole bunch of people around.
Yeah. They usually have something in the way of subs, sandwiches.
No, that's not.
I understand.
I'll be Commissioner Bolt. Now, feed him well.
Yeah, here you go.
Thank you, Mr. Ted. We really appreciate it. Any other questions for Mr. Mosteller? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so.
I need to ask a question.
Go ahead.
I thought I remembered reading the other day, and maybe it changed, that our public hearings were scheduled for 10, but I see it's 10:30.
It's 10:30. And here's what I recommend, and I'll hopefully, Attorney Schuler will understand what I'm saying. So, on the agenda itself, I have a lot of stuff scheduled after 12:30 that, that involves, not necessarily the public hearings are 10:30, we can't stop before 10:30, but the opening of the bids, of the RFQs, I'm sorry, they're not bids, things like the P&amp;Z report that require people to be here. That's all scheduled after 12:30. However, Aaron and I could try and do our report, get it done by 10:30, and then that's less for you guys to deal with after 12:30. Commissioner Bolt, did you want to explain to the board about after 12:30?
Sure. I have made an obligation with my wife to attend a Florida Christian Writers' Conference in Leesburg. It's been going on for many, many months, so I'm going to have to miss that afternoon meeting to go there with her. I hope you all will forgive me. I really don't want to, but I need to do that. I'm the designated driver. And chauffeur and everything else.
So, I would think doing our reports would be a good thing then, since Commissioner Bolt won't be here.
Yes. But my specific question is, if these public hearings start at 10:30, Commissioner Ward and I don't have no choice about this 10:45 recess.
I know.
We legally have to be in the supervisor's office. So, how are we going to start a public hearing if they're not wrapped up in 15 minutes?
We're going to have to pause the.
Okay, so I just want to make sure.
Yes, we're going to have to recess the public hearings, and you guys, when we come back, we'll finish the public hearing. But we could start it afterwards. We can't start before then. That's, that's the issue. And these were scheduled and ran, ran in the newspaper like quite a while ago.
So, is it okay to do stuff that's scheduled for a 12:30 on the agenda now, I guess is the bigger question?
I would hope our reports are fine, Attorney Schuler, but I prefer not to do any of P&amp;Z, opening the bid, the RFQs, anything like that, where the public is, not that they don't pay attention to Aaron myself, but you know what I mean.
Well, I'm looking on the agenda. I don't see where there's a time specific for your report or Aaron's. It's just item 30 and 31, but I guess to be on the safe side, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be for the board to, by motion, amend the agenda so that you can proceed with the reports for the fiscal manager and the county coordinators.
Okay.
It's out of an abundance of caution, because the agendas themselves don't give a time certain for their reports, though they do appear near the end of the agenda.
Okay. So, pleasure to the board?
So, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion to amend the agenda from Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Bolt, to go ahead and handle the fiscal manager report, county manager, and possibly the county attorney report now at this stage in the agenda. Any discussion before we vote? All right. Before we vote, is there anyone in the room that wants to comment publicly on this change in the agenda? All right, see if there's anyone.
Anyone on Zoom would like to comment on this, this motion before the board. Please indicate by raising your hand. No hands raised.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Please proceed, Miss Christopher.
All right, Commissioners. The item number one is the county works through the commencement checklist for the FERDAP program. In addition to a current survey and proof of clear title, the county must also omit a final conceptual drawing and budget figures for the equipment of the beach park facility. Fortunately, the FERDAP program does allow for playground equipment to be purchased via contract or piggybacked contract pricing, and that will help move the contract, move the project forward quickly. The total cost is estimated to be around $300,000 to accomplish all project elements included in the FERDAP grant application, which includes inclusive equipment, inclusive surfacing, shade, and picnic seating and benches. The St. George Island Civic Club has raised nearly $40,000 to go towards this project, and Commissioner Jones intends to approach TDC at the meeting tomorrow to request funding assistance in the amount of $60,000 to complete the beach park facility improvements. The county will need to formally establish an advisory ranking group for the contract pricing-based proposals from inclusive playground suppliers. In addition to myself and Mark Currenton as county representatives, the following community members have expressed interest in the project and our park users. Samantha Fortunus, resident and business owner, mother of three small children, and attendee of the initial public meetings for the project input last year during the application process. Marie Allen, resident and grandmother of a child living with special needs, and Amy Hudson, resident and executive director of the St. George Island Lighthouse Association. Board action to appoint the proposed members mentioned above to the SGI Lighthouse Park Playground Improvements Project Advisory Ranking Committee.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Bolt and Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion? I would say, under discussion, these three names I'm definitely good with. Ms. Fortunus, as it's been stated, has children. Ms. Marie Allen has a special needs person in her family, and Ms. Amy Hudson is at the lighthouse at our beach park facility there, and that's what we're asking for money from TDC for, at our beach park facilities. So, you know, I'm good with those three names. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item number two. This is in regard to the Rumen Park Improvements Project. As this project is also a FERDAP project, in addition to an updated survey and proof of clear title, the county must also omit final budget estimates for the Rumen Park Improvements Project. This project will be slightly more complicated and slower to complete, as Dewberry and others will have to design and engineer the drainage improvements and handicapped access ramp. This project will require the county to go through the formal bid solicitation process for the large project elements before moving forward with improvements to the dugouts and batting cages. The lighting project will also be in progress at the same time, which will require a lot of coordination for all work to be completed between sports seasons. The county will need to formally establish an advisory ranking group for the project coordination between sports season and design elements of the improvements to the dugouts. In addition to myself and Mark Currenton as county representatives, the following community members have expressed interest in the project and our park users, devoted parents, volunteers, and active participants with the sports leagues. Levi and/or Colette Odom, and/or Stephen Peterson, and Morgan and/or Jason Thompson. Board action to appoint the proposed members mentioned above to the Rumen Park Improvements Project Advisory Ranking Committee.
So moved to approve with comment.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Commissioner Ward, please proceed with your comment.
Yeah, these, these names of individuals, this all started with Levi Odom, who was a coach at the time. He took me, showed me the part. It was obviously a lot of needs that needed to happen. I did the batting cages, though. We did get those upgraded. Mr. Davis is gone, but he did use his budget to upgrade those with fencing and such. So, maybe that's something that we could talk about, maybe doing like a pole barn over it, so if they're out there practicing in the rain, we could look at doing that. But I'm, I'm very, I'm excited to see this project move forward. So, thank you, Aaron, everybody that was involved.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item number three. The final completion date for the FEMA-funded repairs of Alligator Drive is set for October 31st. The concrete cap and sheet pile work is finished on both sides of the road, and paving is near completion. Several progress photos shared by Oyster Radio are attached to this report, and a final inspection of the project is set to occur next week. On October 10th, contractor Anderson Columbia reached out to project engineers Dewberry in regard to adding an additional area of resurfacing to the project to allow for a smooth transition between old and new asphalt. The tie-in area is a 16-foot by 22-foot section of deteriorated asphalt outside the area of the FEMA scoped repairs. I've discussed this change order with Commissioner Bolt, and he would like to proceed with the $6,239.20 of additional paving work to smooth the transition between old and new, if the board agrees, and will pay the additional expense with paving funds. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached change order number five in the amount of $6,239.20 for the Alligator Drive repairs project.
So moved with comment.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Bolt, please proceed.
So, I had the opportunity to drive the rebuilt road. It's 1,252 linear feet, and it really looks good. So nicely engineered. You know, when you drive on that road, and you look over to the left-hand side, on the seaward side, heading westbound, you see a lot of riprap rock. What you don't see is the detailed infrastructure that's occurring. 15 feet below that grade, 15 feet below that grade, there's all that riprap right along the base of that seawall, as well as stainless, steel sheet piling that acts as a barrier for that road. They built the riprap right on top of the land thereafter, and then if you see the, the angling of the shoreline, they've actually built not only the riprap against the seawall, but the seawall is against a concrete barrier, if you will, that is sloped and pitched upward. So, those waves are going to have a lot of work to get up there onto that road when they, when they do get there. And there's also drainage now that looks very nice on the landward side. It's a, it's a wonderful, neat piece of engineering. It costs $4,000 a linear foot, bottom line, to do that. And it's, it's been done certainly with the legacy of so many Commissioners before me. I'm just happy to be able to be here at the final stage of it, and I think it's a great compliment to Franklin County as it goes forward. I hope someday that Franklin County will be able to have a little ribbon cutting for that very special project.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Commissioners, next item is item number four. Southeastern Consulting Engineers recommend the acceptance of the attached change order for the C-30A widening and resurfacing project. The original construction plans as developed by Dewberry called for ground-in rumble strips, which are not as visible in inclement weather as the white profiles show on plastic edge lines. The attached change order results in a net cost reduction for the project of $1,950.17. County engineers Dewberry have also submitted an access permit to FDOT for a safety modification to add a stop sign at the intersection of CR-30A and Highway 98. No response has yet been received on that request. Board action to accept and authorize the chairman to sign the attached change order number two for the CR-30A project.
So moved.
The motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Lockwood. Any discussion?
On, Mr. Chairman, on the stop sign issue, there's been a number of people that's come to me and said they've had a numerous amount of wrecks there, and it's attributed to visitors in our area, not so much the locals, which have used that road with the yield sign in there for many, many years. But people are, they have a tendency to say, it's a yield, I don't have to stop. And when you come around that curve there, people come around that curve at a high rate of speed. Before you look back, you don't see anything, you pull on out, and next thing you know, somebody's squalid tires about to run over you. So, I think this is a needed design, that we need to go to a stop sign there, and it's all about protection of public safety, and I wholeheartedly agree with the change from a yield to a stop sign at that intersection.
I've also had numerous conversations with people about that intersection. All right, so any other discussion before we vote? Would you have a motion and second, correct, Ms. Jessica?
Would you?
Didn't want to get lost here. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Next item is Coastal Partnership Initiative Project Design Indian Creek Park. At the September 6 meeting, the board approved development of a grant application for the Coastal Partnership Initiative Program for the design and permitting of approximately 50-foot of commercial dock with finger piers at the head of Indian Creek. Attached to this report is the completed grant application, which will need to be signed by the chairman and submitted before the close of the application period on October 31st. The Coastal Partnership Initiative Program provides assistance with working waterfront areas. Indian Creek Park has six commercial dockage slips included in the management plan on file with the Florida Communities Trust, which was the entity which provided the funds to acquire the park. At the time of acquisition, the four existing commercial crabbers were grandfathered in as tenants. At this time, only two of the original crabbers remain, and they have since moved from the unimproved slip, slips at the head of the Indian Creek to the two slips closest to the ramp. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached completed grant application for the Coastal Partnership Initiative Program. And on a side note, I know Commissioner Parrish had brought up about a floating dock at Buddy Ward Seaford Landing Park. With that, when we plan on pursuing voting improvement plan, grant program for that one, and that will be actually in February.
Okay, so do you need board action to approve this?
I do.
Grant application?
Yep.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion before we vote? I would like to say, Ms. Erin, it's not part of this project, and I don't know what all it's going to entail, because we haven't done this by ourselves. We need to see what it's going to take to get a permit to dredge Indian Creek. I know it has nothing to do with what's going on now, but that does need to happen.
Okay.
There's almost no water there.
I will reach out to Dewberry and see if they can pursue that.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Next item, item number six. Franklin County has received $54,602 in the Florida in the Florida Department of Transportation's County Incentive Grant Program to survey design permit and prepare construction plans and specifications to widen and resurface the .735 miles of patent drive from SR-30 US 98 to SR-300 Island Drive. This project will widen the road from the existing 10-foot travel lanes to two standard 12-foot wide travel lanes. Roadway swales and ditches will also be regraded to improve drainage. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached grant agreement and resolution of authorization.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Discussion? I will say, under discussion, this also includes, it's already in the design documents with DOT. On the east end, the road is going to make a sharper turn. We're doing away with that. Why? Because that's created problems through the Middle East point. So it's going to have a sharp turn 298 as well. That's already in the plans, just so everybody's aware of that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Okay, next item is item number seven. As the county has formulated scopes, project details, and preliminary construction cost estimates moving forward with the Restore Countywide Dune Restoration and the St. George Island Stormwater Improvements Projects, an amendment to include the construction activities in the county's Restore Program multi-year implementation plan will need to be approved after the completion of a well-advertised 45-day public comment and review period. Once the plan is amended to formally include the construction activities, the formal construction grant can be submitted to Treasury for approval. The reference dune study, construction cost estimates, and preliminary designs are included as attachments to this report. The purpose and objective of the estimated $1.5 million Countywide Dune Restoration Project as outlined in the attached multi-year plan amendment narrative. Purpose: In April of 2022, MRD Associates Incorporated completed a Countywide Dune Restoration Study funded with planning assistance dollars provided by the Restore Act Direct Component Program. This study identified four shoreline segments along approximately 11 miles of coastline in need of restoration and provided cost-effective solutions to rebuild and increase the stability of the dunes. Based upon the findings and recommendations of this study, the county intends to pursue the construction template dune and coastal hammock restoration at the two county beach park locations, St. George Island's Lighthouse Park and Carabelle Beach Park, and implement a Countywide Dune Vegetation Project. A varied vegetation footprint of between six and seven and a half feet could be installed along the toe of the dune areas along 11 miles of public beaches, which includes, let's see, point, let's see, four miles of St. George Island, .8 miles of Carabelle Beach, five miles of Alligator Point, and 1.2 miles of Bald Point. Native coastal vegetation would be placed on 18-inch centers and staggered rows for a natural look. Approximately 171,500 plants would be needed for the countywide effort and an estimated installed cost per plant of $1.25 each. Franklin County would obtain written consent from interested private property owners for the plants to be installed along the dune line. As cited in the study, native dune vegetation provides significant benefits to beaches, dunes, uplands, and wildlife. Salt-tolerant dune plants build protective dunes by trapping and stabilizing wind-blown beach sand, reduce erosion losses by wind and storms, provide a buffer against storm surges and salt spray, provide shelter for wildlife, and block light pollution for nesting and hatchling sea turtles. The objectives, number one, improve existing dune structures at public park facilities by increasing crest elevations, crest widths, and slide side slopes, utilizing template dune restoration methods. And two, improve existing dune structures by assisting beachfront property owners by planting vegetation to assist in the development and growth of the dunes on private property. And then the second is the purpose and objective of the estimated $4.5 million St. George Island Stormwater Improvements Project as outlined in the attached multi-year plan amendment narrative. Purpose: Franklin County contracted with Dewberry engineers for the planning and design phase of the St. George Island Stormwater Improvements Project. This phase is nearly complete and was funded with planning assistance dollars provided by the Restore Act Direct Component Program, which determined the need for installation of approximately 1,489 linear feet of 18-inch piping and 3,186 linear feet of 24-inch piping, and 3,270 square yards of asphalt patching and resurfacing, sod improvements, other required piping and restoration activities to complete the overall objectives of the Stormwater Improvements Project. The purpose of this phase is to fund the construction portion of the project, which will include all activities mentioned above to extend, enhance, and construct stormwater drainage facilities to increase the capacity for the Commercial District of St. George Island. Objective number one, increase stormwater drainage capacity. Board action to approve the attached narrative and preliminary budget matrix for the construction component of the two projects already in the existing county Restore multi-year plan.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Parrish and Commissioner Ward.
Comment.
All right, please proceed.
This is very special, particularly in two areas. That dune restoration project is well-defined now, and this narrative is excellent. Ecologically, it is just nothing but benefiting our coastal shores. And the way it's designed is just so nature-friendly and so environmentally friendly. And I think it's just been well-thought-out. And you need only go to St. George Island there and that main drive coming in, and particularly after rain and along some of those side roads, like in front of the beach pit and all that, when there is just huge, thousands and thousands of gallons of stormwater that's right there and not raining, that second project is going to be very special, too, for folks.
Any other board discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, next item is item number eight, and this is a new addition to your county's Restore multi-year plan. This is the purpose and objective of the estimated $2.5 million landfill transfer station and administrative building as outlined in the attached multi-year plan amendment narrative. Purpose: Franklin County is coming to a crossroads, whereas there are only two options to extend the capacity of the landfill. One, the county will need to acquire or purchase a large tract of suitable land, complete a lengthy permitting process through FDEP, and build a new landfill at an estimated construction cost of 10 to 15 million. Or two, the county will construct a county transfer station operation in lieu of a new landfill to dispose of waste at a private facility inland at an estimated cost of 2.5 million. A possible alternative site for a new landfill has not yet been identified, and coastal property is expensive and in short supply. Franklin County proposes pursuing option number two at this time to construct a transfer station operation with Restore Act Direct Component Program dollars. In July of 2022, Franklin County contracted with Dewberry engineers to conduct a Franklin County municipal solid waste transfer station feasibility study in order to produce pre-construction design services. The feasibility study will estimate cost to permit and constructable solid waste transfer station and administrative building utilizing capacity, intended size, and level of service of the proposed facility based on current and future tonnages, estimate the manpower and equipment operations cost to properly operate and maintain the proposed transfer station, and determine the estimated cost to transfer municipal solid waste to a selected disposal facility. Franklin County will use the results of the feasibility study to formulate a scope of work and budget for construction cost. Objective number one, construct municipal solid waste transfer station operation and administrative building. And two, extend the current capacity with the remaining useful life of the existing landfill. Board action to approve adding the attached narrative and preliminary budget matrix for the construction component of the landfill transfer station and administrative building to the county's Restore multi-year plan. And I will say, Commissioners, when Hurricane Ian was forecasted to be coming our way, I was actually terrified just knowing that Hurricane Michael had ate up about seven years of space in our county landfill capacity. And at this point in time, we only have about nine years estimated life remaining. So that's something, we're pretty much, you know, one serious natural disaster away from having used up our capacity.
Pleasure, the board?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish?
Second with comment.
Second by Commissioner Bolt, please proceed.
You know, this is a defining, very, very important motion. This actually, when you see what you've just said here, we're looking at moving away from a landfill and property at $10 million to $15 million into something more modern, a transfer station. That's what this is all about, isn't it? And so I really think we need to be aware of this. This is a very important vote today, moving forward for the future of Franklin County. Transfer station.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, a conversation, Erin, that we were having, the sooner we do the transfer station, think about it, you could save whatever life you have in the landfill, and that would extend dozens of years. You see what I mean?
Yeah, it's a benefit.
As a true backup, just in case another storm hits up here.
Yep, that's right.
So in our opinion, the sooner with the transfer station, the better.
Yeah, it's actually a preservation of your existing capacity. And this, per se, is not to say for sure that we're going to, you know, not pursue, you know, the construction of a new landfill. But right now, it's just, you know, we haven't identified a site, you know, there's, as far as the permitting, the final cost concept from Dewberry. So this will actually get us into that multi-year implementation plan with the 45-day public comment period. So if the board wishes to pursue, it's in the plan.
Yeah, check in the box.
Yep.
Yeah. And you know, I'm also wondering, when we think of the transfer station concept, are we confident that the depository on the other end is going to continue, maybe in perpetuity, to allow us to deposit our transfer material to them?
They'd have to do something, Commissioner. They'd have to do something, Commissioner, because they have too many different entities that are bringing their waste to them.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Can we depend upon them?
Yeah, I believe, let's guess, it seems like the Spring Hill landfill has 30 to 50 years of existing capacity. And that is, you know, if they were to actually have many more municipalities dumping than what they currently have. You know, so right now, they're confident with their space. I know Gulf County actually operates a transfer station. That's how they handle their disposal. And it is something that you see, kind of a trend across Florida with coastal counties. And especially with Franklin County, you know, when we have approximately 85% of our land is actually public purpose. So for us, we're even more limited. We're just a, you know, a stretch of very valuable property right along the coastline.
I don't want the county held hostage on transfer fees either. You know, if we, that's a single source where we're depositing everything, and they say, "Oh, we need more money to transfer your product." We worry about that, so how can we control that?
Yeah, that's going to be a part of the Dewberry feasibility study.
Sure is, okay.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, next item is item number nine. It is the rolling lease purchase program with the road department dump trucks. It is time again to renew the rolling dump truck lease purchase agreement. The cost of new 2023 heavy-duty Mack dump trucks is $146,950. The county will own two trucks for up to 24 months, making the first lease payment of $17,500 per truck as budgeted, with the second year payment increasing to $18,750 per truck. Before the third payment, the trucks will be traded with Nextran at market pricing and replaced with two new model-year dump trucks. This program allows the county road department to have reliable dump trucks covered by an added extended warranty with little maintenance expense year after year. This is the fifth renewal of the rolling lease program with vendors leasing to a Nextran, which was previously Capital City Truck. Board action to approve the attached resolution and authorization for the chairman to sign the five-year lease purchase agreement with leasing to finance the purchase of two new 2023 Mack Model GR64B dump trucks in the amount of $293,806.64 from Nextran of Alabazie, and the trade-in of the 2021 trucks, last four of the VIN numbers 4377 and 4373, subject to review and approval of the agreement by county attorney Michael Schuler.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, and I do have an unscheduled action item. I actually need your approval to cut a manual check for the Alligator Point Volunteer Fire Department closing.
Second.
So a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Bolt.
Yeah, you should, I think they expect you to provide a reward.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I was thinking that we needed to call for comment or anything.
We are.
Okay, we will, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the total amount required from the buyer is $231,639.25 plus a $7 cashier's check fee. So that would bring the check total to $231,646.25. But we will actually issue the check to Centennial Bank, which will in turn issue a cashier's check to us.
Okay. So have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Okay, seeing no discussion, does anyone publicly want to comment on this item? Since it was not formally on the agenda. See if anybody wants to.
You do have, Mr. Berry.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Berry, if you would unmute your device.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Mr. Chairman. I've reviewed these documents in their entirety, and I have several questions. One, the purchase of this property is for the redirection, relocation of Alligator Drive, if I understood it correctly. I want to know if there's been a PDNE study? Do we have plans ready to go once it's purchased? Secondly, the, I saw no direction or information with regards to how long occupancy would be kept there for the fire, volunteer fire department. Under those conditions, who has the liability in case we do have a storm? For those assets that are there, even though it's county property at that point, why don't we close this deal? And last but not least, I would like for you to take a look in depth at the closing statement and look specifically at where the title insurance payments went to. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Berry. Any more discussion by the board before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, Ms. Griffin?
I just have some miscellaneous project updates. The brick projects moving forward, the county, the replacement of the roof and the ceiling of the structural envelope for the county courthouse did not qualify. They said that was more of a routine maintenance issue, so it did not qualify for the grant funding. So we still have that budgeted in our American Rescue Plan funds. However, we did receive preliminary approval from them that the windows at Williams Memorial Hospital would qualify, and also the security windows at the jail would also qualify. So we are moving forward with both of those applications.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else for Ms. Griffin before we proceed? Thank you, Erin, appreciate your help.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, it's almost 20 after, that you take a short break. But please, let's start promptly at 10:30 to hit this public hearing running, and then we will go for our recess, our main recess.
For recess till 10:30.
can be challenging at times. So the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County is dedicated to supporting you as you take care of your health. We offer many resources and services, including but not limited to COVID-19 vaccines, breast and cervical cancer screens, tobacco prevention and sensation education, and information on heart health, nutrition, and physical activity. Maintaining a healthy lifestyle can help to prevent chronic conditions like heart disease and stroke, diabetes, COPD, and obesity. Healthy lifestyle changes can also help you maintain a healthy immune system. Tips to good health include eating a healthy diet, being physically active, avoiding tobacco and excessive alcohol, managing stress effectively, getting enough sleep, and seeing your medical provider for routine checkups. To find out more about how we can help you maintain a healthier lifestyle, please visit franklin florida health.gov or call 850-653-2111.
Welcome to Southern charm at its finest. A brick walkway leads to the inviting front porch of this beautifully restored three-bedroom, two-bath coastal cottage in the heart of the historic district in Appalachia Cola. It boasts hardwood floors, high ceilings, crown molding, tongue and groove walls, a clawfoot tub, antique fireplaces, and a renovated chef's kitchen, and so many extras. It's just a short walk to the bay and a quick golf cart ride to downtown Appalachia Cola. An estate retreat in the heart of Appalachia Cola's historic district, built in European beauty, enlarged in 1907. 12-foot ceilings, double parlor, back-to-back fireplaces, original hard pine floors stained in ebony, substantial gourmet kitchen with steam convection oven. This graceful Queen Anne Victorian overlooks Lafayette Park and Appalachia Cola Bay in the heart of the historic district, was impeccably renovated with Cypress and hard pine, and this home was built in 1895 and also retains its original floors, Cypress walls, and ceilings.
We're your coastal real estate experts. Call us.
Hi, I'm Cara Landis. I'm a professional Realtor in love with St. George Island. When my husband and I and our dogs moved here in 2002, it was the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand in surf.
Well, Cara to me is much more than an agent. She's become a friend. Since we bought the house, we've needed work done and she knows everybody there is that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth and value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico with its white sand beaches and blue sky has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties. From taxes to coastal setback lines to where to find the best oysters, it's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house and the state of the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Cara.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at 850-653-7753.
Take a haunted historical tour in downtown Appalachia Cola with your own personal ghostly guide. Hear ghost stories about people from the town's past told in front of some of the city's most historic sites. You'll also hear some of the worst hearse of bloody bluff and more. For days, times, and to book, visit appalachghostour.com.
Do you need a vacation? A vacation that you can reconnect with the ones you love? Spend time relaxing, not rushing.
... our beautiful piece of paradise, please make sure you visit our local shops, restaurants, galleries, and take some time to experience something different and take a fishing trip or tour with one of our experience guides. Our neighbors and their businesses are the heartbeat of our community. Thank you for visiting and remember to shop local, eat local, and fish local. This message is brought to you by the Appalachia Cola Bay Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, everybody. This is Captain Finn, your favorite captain, by the way, and I'm inviting you to tune in on your desktop computer or mobile device and watch my new web series, How to Forgotten Coast Like a Local. And let me tell you, I've been exploring this beautiful piece of paradise right here in Franklin County, Florida, and I want to share it with you. Heard about the legend of Tate's Hell? Give you a little tidbit on our great fishing we have here. I've checked out our museums and I've also put the spotlight on our nightlife. So tune in, How to Forgotten Coast Like a Local, with your favorite captain. That's me, by the way, Captain Finn. Hope you tune in.
Spooky season, y'all, and you'll have a bewitchingly good time with Appalachia Ghost Tour. Check out our Haunted Historical Tour or our Paranormal Experience Tour. Your creepy guide will tell you local ghost stories and you can do an investigation in downtown Appalachia Cola to see if any ghosts roam the streets. For days, times, and to book your tour, visit
County Commissioners now back in session. We are going to our next thing on the schedule, which is at public hearings. The first one's an ordinance amendment. The Franklin County Conference planned to change the permitted use of a 5.24 plus or minus acre parcel of land. So.
Okay. All right. So this is just a notice of land use change. There's two parts to this. There's a land use change and then a zoning change. First, we have the 5.24 acre parcel of land going from residential to industrial use. Brandon, if you wanted to step up to the podium, if you guys have any questions for him.
Morning, sir.
How you doing, Mr. Ricky?
Doing good. Please state your name for the record.
Brandon Atkinson.
Okay. Does any Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Atkinson today?
Mr. Chairman, I do not. I just want to say that I've done extensive research on this issue and the property that is across from this property that's requested zoning change is industrial. This property itself used to be industrial many years ago. It, for some reason, was changed to R1 and Mr. Atkinson is just requesting it to go back to what it was before, which is industrial.
Okay. Any other Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Atkinson? All right. Proceedually, sir, what should we do next?
Public comment, Mr. Chairman.
This time we'll call for public comment. This is a workshop, so you don't have to have a speaker's card filled out to comment. Anyone in the room wishing to comment about this publicly? Mr. Merle?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Courtney, what about Zoom?
I don't see anything.
Well, you can tell from there.
Mm-hmm. There's no hands raised.
Courtney's correct, sir. There are no hands raised. We have three attendees by Zoom and no hands raised.
Okay.
I will, would you like me to mention that there were some emails sent to you guys?
That's fine, yes, please.
No, I let you do this. It's Chairman.
Yeah, there were a couple of emails, I think, all the Commissioners received. The two I looked at in particular were in opposition to this change. Adjacent, some adjacent property owners, they brought up some other issues that I don't think are something that can be clarified in the public hearing today, that they, you know, didn't think people received due notice or some other things. But there were, for the record, there were two emails I know that I received about it.
May I say too, Mr. Ricky, that the people that sent the emails, they do not live here at all. There's no houses adjacent to my land at all. And like I said, many of you know that I own the wrecker company here. So when there's wrecks or things like that, a wrecked car does get hauled to that yard sometimes, but you can't see it. It's way in the back of the woods back there. The only way to see it is to basically sneak over to the property and.
You have to be there.
You have to be there, yes, sir.
Well, I've had a wrecked car up there before, so I know what you're talking about. It's kind of way back there.
I also wanted to state that we did give, we did have a complaint and it was reviewed by Florida Department of Environmental Protection and I gave you that report there. They did not have a problem with what he was doing there. It was, yeah. So that was closed.
Okay. Anything else from the Commission? All right. Pleasure, the board?
I motion to approve this zoning request change.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Yes, sir.
Proceedually, we have to deal with this as Ms. Banks said, in two motions. The first motion would be the land use change.
That's what this one is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If you would amend the motions for the land use change, Commissioner Ward, if you would consider amending your second, also Commissioner Bolt.
I'll amend my first.
I'll amend my second.
First and second have been amended to, the scope of what we're looking at was a land use change for this public hearing. Any discussion by the Commission before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, up next would be, go ahead, Ms. Courtney.
Up next would be the zoning change for this same parcel of land. It's just, you have to have the land use changed before you can approve the zoning change. So it's basically the same thing.
Okay. So are there any questions from the Commission from Mr. Atkinson? All right, is there any one here in the room that would like to comment publicly on this potential zoning change? All right, is there anyone by Zoom?
No hands are raised.
Could you please ask and see if they want to raise their hand?
If anyone on the line would like to comment on this proposed zoning change, you can, if you're by computer, you can use the raise your hand feature, or if you're doing by telephone, you hear star, what is it, star?
Six.
Star six to raise your hand and star nine to unmute.
All right. Commissioners, pleasure to the board.
I submit to approve this rezoning change.
Okay, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion, Commissioners, before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, five a. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky.
Yep. Please proceed, Ms. Courtney.
All right. Next up, we have an ordinance change. Let me get it pulled up first. For a 0.69 acre parcel, it's two lots and from residential R1 to R4, single-family home industry. This is in Appalachia Cola, Franklin County. Let me, it's not letting me. There we go. Mark and I both reviewed this and we don't have a problem with what they're requesting the change for. Want to come up?
Let me know that pleaded this similar to neighboring properties.
Yeah, neighboring properties.
Not bordering.
Yeah, neighboring properties. I've done this prior.
Are you a property owner, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's your name, sir?
Darren Guat.
Okay. Commissioners, anybody have any question for Mr. Guat? All right. Is there anyone in the room that would like to publicly comment on this matter? Could you please ask if anyone by Zoom?
If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on this proposed change, if you're on Zoom, you can do the raise your hand feature. If you're on the phone, you hit star six to raise your hand and star nine to unmute.
Okay, there are none. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Second.
To approve by Commissioner Pears, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it, Ms. Courtney?
Yes, sir. For now.
So we will recess until 12:30, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.